Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll call show always present since except Councilman Whitner. We do have a quorum. Like to start this meeting was a fair, those that choose so please join. Dear Lord. We appreciate all the bounties you've given us. And we are looking for your guidance as we are here representing government body of Shoshone and our decisions for the betterment of the citizens of Shoshone. We ask your blessings in all of this and for all the citizens of Shoshone. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Dan, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move we. Uh, approve the agenda with adding check two, three, three, two, one to the bills.
Two, two, three, one, two, three, three, two, one, two, three, three, two, one to bills.
Which is?
Any mileage reimbursement that we need an explanation on. For the reimbursement check, I guess. From last meeting.
Uh, do we have any other additions to the? Present agenda?
Uh, the trailhead deal is already on there, fourteen A.
Okay, they didn't own the one I printed out.
Well, it's on the one that got mailed or emailed out, what? The trailhead and project is on right fourteen A. Not on the agenda.
I see it there.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do we need to amend that agenda and that state as such? I don't know.
No, it's fine. It's it's.
It was on one of us mad email down.
Okay, that's. That should be good. There are several versions from this one to that one. Okay.
Probably you might have got the first copy before she finished.
Right, right, correct. Very good, I can. So. So, uh. We have. Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of. End fourteen eight or into eight percent agenda, Jeff number three, three, two, one.
Second.
It's been seconded by. Councilwoman Hartley, any discussion?
Our discussion is. Some clarification on this chat.
Oh, just to prove getting it on the agenda.
Sorry.
Have that explained into you.
Any further discussions? None being on paper say aye. Aye, all the same, motion passed on the affirmative. Uh, any. Uh, communication from citizens, do you have anybody online? No, none. Cassandra Janet, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, we approved the minutes of February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
They have a motion to approve by my councilman Statler, they approve the minutes of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. I have a second.
February eleventh.
Or February, pardon?
My motion is the minutes from February eleven.
Okay, you know what I got citizen. I'm looking at the wrong, wrong one. That's one on that. Prove of the minutes, uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
Then moved by Councilman Taylor, second by Councilwoman Harky through the minutes of February eleventh, twenty twenty five. All favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. I have a motion to approve the bills February twelfth, twenty twenty five to. February twenty fifth. Twenty twenty five with the addition of check number. Two, three, three, two, one, that's been added to that.
I remember we approved the bills from February twelfth, twenty twenty five to February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five with the addition of the check. Number two, three, three, two, one.
And I have a second.
I second it.
Then motion by Councilman Steeler, second by. Councilwoman Hartley through the bills as stated. Discussion.
Okay, I have some discuss questions on this check of two, three, three, two, one. But we have two motel rooms here. You have to sleep in two rooms?
No, there, there is rooms for, there is, you're talking about my reimbursement on the checks that I paid out of my own pocket.
Well, on all of it, actually, the whole thing.
Okay, we have. This A two A group, we are a group. Doing work for the town of Shoshone, which has. Councilman Nordine and myself on it plus three volunteers.
Okay.
We had rooms for two nights for five people.
I could see you and Norden, but why are we paying for the other people?
Because they are acting as agents of the town of Shoshone for the betterment of the town of Shoshone for no compensation other than we, we cover their expenses. Uh, for meals and motels as, as they design, and that's what we, that's what we did. You know, our other odd, could we could hire consultants to do this?
Brought to the council to be told beforehand.
We had budget to do this. I did check with the clerk before I did it. Do I have budget? This is something I have budget for. This falls under my jurisdiction.
This comes out of your budget.
This that comes out of, out of the town. We have two different budgets. We could pull it out of this as the administrator of the town. This falls under my jurisdiction. If I checked with the clerk to make sure we had budget, if we did not have budget, I would have came to the council for budget. But this, they are working as agents of the town of Shoshone for the betterment of the town of Shoshone. I know at least one of them missed two days of work because of this.
The way, and the way it was explained to me, maybe I'm. Off, but. The A two A is the state funded group that helps find. Grant money for municipalities and different organization. And that. A team from. Our town of, there was you, there was a couple of citizens.
Mark, Mark Dean, Morden and myself and three, three citizens.
Three citizens. They volunteered their time to go work with this group trying to find grant money, trying to get. Utilities to the westward expansion.
That was. We had, that was what we. This, let Mark you talk about a little bit besides just me.
Sure, that was the. The idea was to come up with a project to support the town and to try to find the best, most efficient way to do that.
Right.
And so the project, a lot of the discussion really had to do and narrow in the focus down is. In my world, it's kind of like a research project. If the research project is too broad, you can't really get anything accomplished. So the idea was to try to get it focused to a point where we'd be able to, um. You know, basically in ten weeks' time, come up with a good plan, a good approach to be able to get this issue resolved. So I mean, it's. It's a lot of administrative work to really make something like that happen. So that's what we were really trying to do. You know, and but. But right, it's right now. It looks like it's going to be focused on bringing utilities, you know, particular, well, all the utilities to, um. The forty acre and the seventy acre developments on the west end of town. That's kind of where we've been focused.
I think it's hard. Personally, I think it's hard enough to get people to volunteer their time to help. I don't.
I just think that we kind of should have had heads up on it a little bit. Instead of it just.
I, I, every council I gave an A two A booklet that counts a month ago on everybody's desk for you to read.
I think one sitting here.
I mean.
I, we did get the business deals.
And I was in China. I wasn't in the meeting. You know, I was in China. I wasn't in the meeting.
Okay.
You know, I was not here. I was in China, wasn't in the meeting. It's, uh. And. And I know I've mentioned it, but did we sit down and have a, have a big discussion about the whole thing? No.
I, I feel like it's an appropriate use of tax.
Yeah, just being that known that.
But I also feel that you asking questions like that, hey, what is this for? It's very appropriate. I, I think that you're doing your job. By asking for that, I, I'm not being negative towards that at all.
Yeah, and I wonder if, um.
Cause you weren't here either, cause you'd had some surgery.
Yeah, I was kind of. Well, bedridden.
It might have been an interesting explanation had you made it.
Could have been, you know. I don't know, you know, maybe there's a, there's a, a question that that needs to be answered on how we really do travel. You know, for, you know, for the council or for the, for the town and. I know in my world, you know, if somebody's going to go traveling, there's a travel request that gets put in and I look at the numbers I get, I see where the accounts are going to come out of that. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty detailed, you know, and so. I then approve or disapprove. Also, by the time it gets to me, I've already gone, I know what they're doing. I kind of know where they're going. I, I mean, it, it makes sense. It's good college business. You know, and so then I sign off and off they go. And then when they come back, they do a travel, um. A travel requisition. So they, they kind of were voucher in which they then. You know, which is really what we've done with Kim and we put all that stuff out there and then we. You know, then at that point, we, you know, we. Sign off on that. So they, at that point, any reimbursements that need to be done can be done. And, you know, the mileage is typically that, but you know, the rooms on, I mean, it's just. Where, where does everything get put in the budget? You know, I mean, that becomes a, a big deal. And, you know. I certainly appreciate what you're saying, Tammy. I mean, it's like. Maybe a little discussion was good. Maybe that's something we could do in the future. I mean, it, it makes.
Well, it just keeps everybody on the same page.
It does. And quite frankly, for the A two A project. Or any project really, I mean, I think, uh, you know, some discussion here would really make some sense just so we could be able to. Have everybody on the same.
Well, and you have people coming up to you and asking you questions. You're like. I don't know. You know?
I didn't realize the February five, six and the September three, four were actually scheduled meetings for Shoshone and Casper. And you may have said that, I don't know. I did. It's right there. It's on the packet. I didn't under, it wasn't.
It is, you know, and, and personally, I feel this is all very legitimate. I mean, we have a project that's going on on the west end of town. We need to get it finished. Uh. You know, because we need to start selling lots. I mean, there's a lot of good reasons why we need to get that done. You know, and so, uh, this project is, is there really to help with that? And, uh. I mean. Quite frankly, you know, the fact that it was, I mean, this was a Wednesday and Thursday. You know, I mean, I had to take time for my college work to be able to go do that.
Right.
You know, these other volunteers as well. So it's a worthwhile project is really the.
Right. I just wanted to know what we were doing here.
Sure, I mean. I think that.
You're just doing your job, asking them.
I kind of like outside the bars.
Well, you know, all like conversations, right? And we really kind of get to accept the speed. Yeah.
And we did have the packet. I just didn't. I didn't understand. Okay, this is happening. This is the plan, and I didn't want to ask enough questions either.
Yeah, so I mean. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm new to the council. I'm new to town administration. Do we need to have a more formal process for this? But I also don't want to be tying.
Well, we knew in June. I mean, it was, if the money's on the budget, it already was approved.
Yeah, right. So I mean, you've got that process and, you know, things come up, you know, I mean. Maybe this was the exception because we have volunteers that were calling as well, you know, I mean, or something.
It just seemed like a whole lot of money for just two days.
Yeah.
But there was five people.
We did not know all that.
Yeah.
If the, all the bills you approved. How did we end up with me paying for some of them? Because. The check passed mail on the credit card.
But we didn't know exactly what it all went for. It does not come out on this paper, what you put it all on there for.
Well, Tim's got it all in there.
Now I do after I asked for it.
No.
But you have to ask for it when there's a council meeting. You can't ask till there's nobody here to ask.
But like I said, if, if it was all there, maybe Kim needs to put that information.
It's on there now. She has put it on the new checks.
So.
That's to help so we can look at it. And tell.
But.
Nobody was not saying you weren't doing it. We just wanted some clarification.
I think everybody needs to be.
We, this is going to probably come in the future. Uh, do anybody have? Qualms about having. Volunteers.
I think it's great.
Yeah, just so we know about it.
Yeah, so maybe before the, an event comes up, the council meeting before, just bring it up to everybody just to remind them what's going on.
Yeah.
Definitely, if I'm here and we have time.
Yeah, and if it's an.
Out of my preview of my job.
Oh, no, it doesn't.
I mean, it does, it does not, and, and. I don't do anything out of the budget or the, I asked before, before this project, I asked to make sure we had budget for it. If we needed to bring. If it was a budget, I made, we didn't have budget for it and that you don't do it. But I will try to make sure you're informed. I did have. Books out here and I was hoping.
That was just asking, yeah, I think Ken was just asking for a little more communication on it. Just to know.
Oh, I'll try to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, with no screaming.
I can.
Well, yeah. Reasonable questions.
You know, yeah, that's something. That's something I can help with, because.
Let's see that thing. Neither one of you guys were here. We didn't have either one of you here. So we had not a clue.
Mark's actually chairman of that committee.
Well, that's cool, but that's what I'm saying. We didn't have any clarification because neither one of you were here. It was three, that's three.
And Kim wasn't here either.
I think she was out sick.
Yeah, she was out sick. She had all the answers. She knew everything.
So.
Also. Well, it's hashed out now. Call question. Uh. We've. All persons say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing. And paddles only affirmative. Public carrying, none, none. We don't have anything until fourteen A, the trailhead project. If I'm reading that correctly. And. Okay, I've sent you sort of a cover for pages. Uh, so before, we had a bid that come in. Bids all came in too high, uh. There was one of the bids had a mistake, uh. You know. About two and a half million dollars or. Something like that, that, or. That there was, they, they meant to be five thousand dollars, but there's so much for units of five thousand times five thousand. Uh. Was one of the issues, but even without that, all of the bids were, were, were over budget. And I. Maybe a copy of the letter for that explanation from the. From our engineer, uh, she gave us maybe some scenarios how we could negotiate. We did have, if you notice on the back, we had four alternatives. Cause we were afraid we were going to be over budget. But we thought we'd probably come under and then we could see what these we could put in. We, these four, we. Sort of looked at, thought that we could maybe do without figuring out how to do later. But even with. Removing them out, we were still over budget. So we'd have to. So. We have that going on and the mistake going on and was talking with Marshall, the cleanest thing to do. Uh, would be to. Probably put these out for bid again. I know the last time, remember if we did this on, uh. On our town hall remodel. We ended. Saving over, well over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh. And the same little bidder came in the second time, but a couple hundred thousand dollars less. Uh. So, but in any, any event. I'd, I'd like to vote on this to officially. Reject these bids. And I might have some questions for Marshall, because I talked to Marshall about this. He can better explain it than I can.
Yeah, so, uh. Essentially, the council has one and two options that I see is. And I think, uh, the first one is to reject all bids and make the adjustments that you think you need to do to get the price down below budget and put it back out for bid. The reason I say that is because now you know it's going to cost more than budget and you're gonna. And you figured that out before you awarded the bids. And so if you award the bid. And, and change it. Giving the next guy, the person who awarded it, the opportunity to. Change it, they can, you know. Before you gave the bid, there's a potential problem there where the. Bidders that didn't get awarded the bid can come back and sue. Because they weren't given the chance to rebid on it after the changes. Knowing that these changes had to be done before the bids were, it's a lot different than let's say you went in and. Got the product going, you bid on it, and then as the project's going, you find something that needs to be changed and is going to raise the price. Well, now that's an RFP, it was something that no one foresaw before you had. If that makes sense versus before. The other option is you give it to the lowest bidder and you tell him to suck it up. He's going to have to pay even though it screwed up on his bid. You're going to have to give it to him. And he's going to have to stick by his bid. So. That, that would be my, I, I'd suggest you. Reject them all.
I mean, so reject them.
Been moved by Councilwoman Hartley to reject, reject the bids, second by Councilman Norden. Any further discussion?
Upstate.
Okay, Councilman Stetler, we have a quorum then? Yep. I agree with. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. No, Councilman Stever did abstain from voting. Portally port from the clerk. Him wanting to be online or is she, or can you handle her? What's that?
No, she's getting worse. So now she just texted me that. We, she did brief me on it. Um, I was the former clerk treasurer. I did designing for him, so I, I can. Give information and perspective of it and. Although I don't do it anymore, she did go over and as she was completing it with me asking questions and stuff like that, so I can. Uh, provide that, uh. Report, uh. Especially for Councilman Norden, this is first time looking at what you're looking at. I'm sure you've kind of figured out what it represents, but if you have questions, I can. Address that, but just some of the highlights. Um. Our current revenues are, um. Forty seven point eight five percent overall. Um, for the. First half of the year. Uh, so that represents a little bit of everything. And then obviously with some context of that, the second quarter is. Typically one of our. Slowest quarters with. Travel and, and. Lots of factors I'm sure you're aware of that come into play in the second quarter as far as revenues come from various sources. Um, tax payments, uh, sales tax, all those things did. Blows and things like that. Um, third quarter, they're kind of about the same as second quarter, then fourth quarter, they. Come back up. So first and fourth quarter are. The busiest, second, third, or the slowest kind of dip. So. This just represents, um, to give a perspective of an idea. Um, a lot of this was designed when we were, uh, during COVID to manage our budget. We were actually doing instead of. A yearly budget. We had a yearly budget, but we. Didn't know what our revenues were going to be. So we started tracking it by quarter and looking at what our revenues were versus expenditures. And we'd make adjustments every single quarter to our expenditures. That way we ensured that we didn't have a budget exceeded our revenues at the end of the year. We. Our revenues matched our expenditures. Um, so we just kind of stuck with this model or she did when she took over and just be as a representation of how things stand. Um, typically going back the last five years, we're usually right around between forty six to fifty one percent at the halfway mark, depending on. Lots of factors. So, um, but the big thing is if you skip down to our expenditures. Um, you'll see that our discretionary spending amongst all general fund monies is at forty four percent of budget. So when we get our budget or. Our expenditures don't. Uh, exceed our revenues. By statute. So. I guess you can infer that if our revenues are forty seven point eight five percent, but our expenditures are forty four percent. We're spending under. Budget of. In line with the revenues. Does that make sense?
It does. So maybe we travel more.
Jokes, no.
And I will say also, some of our expenditures, we had one-time large purchases, so that forty four percent is actually lower. If you, if you remove some of the one-time large purchases that were made in the first quarter. That skews that numbers a little bit. So the overall, uh, expectation of our budget is that we are, um, tracking it. Be below, um, expenditures and our revenues are expected to be. Uh. Right at expectations overall. Uh. And then we also track. You know, just for, uh. Our accounts or combined funds. And we have a lot of money in reimbursement. So our wild star is tracked with our reimbursements, but obviously we don't keep. Three hundred thousand dollars in our checking account, so we have to draw down, put back, draw down. So that. The negative one hundred fifty five thousand is what's. Outstanding has been submitted for reimbursement, which we did receive in January and February, but they were submitted back in December. So it was about a ninety, sixty, ninety day turnaround. From when we spend the money till we receive it back in reimbursement. And that's with that. Uh. Cause it's a, uh, a credit. So in accounting, it's the opposite. So that's why it's a negative. Um. So our overall differences that are. Overall checking account at the end of the quarter was expected to increase by a hundred two thousand, a hundred forty seven dollars. And some of that would be used for further payments and stuff like that. Uh. So we're not out of money. I guess it's the. Theme of the. Statement.
Pretty close to where we should be, I think.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, uh. Just from my experience. You know, next, I think the third quarter will probably be somewhere like around seventy one to seventy two percent. And then. The fourth quarter, like our first quarter, we were at twenty nine percent, set at twenty five. So we were four percent over. For the whole year in one quarter. So it, it.
Yeah, I mean, it's close.
And, you know, the clerk, she, uh, uh, you know, we'll get into budget, but. If there are signs and things are, are coming down, what she will do is that she will talk with the department heads. Um, and. Free some discretionary spending where it doesn't need to be spent right now, that we'll wait till July first to spend it, just to ensure that we don't. Exceed our revenues or expenditures. So we always want to come out at the end of the year with. You know, as close to zero as possible, but. Uh, ideally negative, when I say negative. Um ideally negative, when I say negative, I mean. We spend less than we took in, so therefore we have money to put back in at the end of the year if we do uh for those savings and things like that. So. Uh she does actively track that, and that's kind of what this is meant to do, is to show where we're at.
Prior before we started doing this, that you, they did a, we didn't get a quarterly report. This is more like we do in business. And quarterly reports is what I'm used to working. And so this is, Chris put this together, and with quarterly reports, this is much. Really better keep a track of where we're at.
And, and it's just to, you know, to keep you well apprised, and this does get published on our, on the town's website, so it's. Available for everyone to look at, but it's also simple. Uh people that don't bother to look at it, they have questions about, you know, that you're well informed where we stand. In any one given year with everything going on, so.
The one question I have, well, a question that I have is then. So we have quarterly reports. Our quarter starts in, on October first, that's our.
Uh July first.
July first.
So yeah, so we have calendar, this is where.
I was thinking.
Yeah, so that's why the second quarter um was October through December.
So this is through December.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Never mind. People define quarters differently.
And well, that's.
As our fiscal year starts July.
Well, you know, and it does at the college too, so you know, it's like duh on my part.
Then you have the government fiscal year is October, then you have the calendar fiscal year is January. So there's three different fiscal years.
It's been too many years in the Air Force, I guess, but you know, yeah.
But um. Any questions on any of the uh year to dates or quarterly or, or just a format that anyone might have that.
Oh, I, I think it's helpful. I mean, it's, it's interesting to see, you know, I've been asking Joel, so Joel, where does our money come from? Well, here's, this is where our money comes from.
And, and I also want to preface, these are all the revenue sources. We have additional revenue sources that are. Uh for lack of a better word, minor. So they're not included on this because we're talking like, you know, ones like two thousand dollars. We don't, like business licenses and stuff like that, that are in. You know, two thousand dollars out of a million dollar budget is. I'm not saying it, it's, it will appear on the final year, but as far as a quarterly thing, it's.
So um, you know, other income sources would be like grant income and other things which you're not on here.
Yes, so that is where the. It's kind of reflected with the AR reimbursements, uh accounts receivable. Those are the grants that I prepare. Uh reimbursements for and send off, and so that kind of signifies that. But our grants are, are preset as a percentage, so. They're not necessarily reflected on this, but um. They are at any given time, if you wanted to, you know, ask what our percentage of a grant would be, I might could provide that separately, but it wouldn't.
No, I, I'm not worried about the grants because the grant, the grant income is matched by the grant.
Yeah, and that's why it's.
And it's earmarked only for that.
Correct, you know, that's why it's not so much on here, but.
I just was curious.
No, that's a good question. And you know, like I said, I don't do this anymore as far as preparing this stuff, but um. I did it for years, so.
Two years.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Over two years, yeah.
That's years.
And uh, you know, the whole, the whole idea was to be more transparent, and that's why.
Right.
You know.
Transparent and also give us, like, give the governing body a, a better, a good idea. Of what's going on. If there, it's easy for, if something comes up, it'd be easier for the clerk to flag if something's out of balance. If, you know, she can also see, like Chris said, we can see some expenditures going high. She can tell the department, hey, we need to cool our wheels a little bit, or we're gonna, gonna be getting out of budget. So it's, 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 it's good fiscal practice, I think. And Chris came up, you know.
The only thing she asked me to do is if I would borrow Joel five thousand dollars.
Cool.
I'm kidding. Over the life, levy? No, but it's. It's a.
Well, she turned me down. That was a personal one with town.
But uh in a nutshell, that's, it, it just kind of give you a, a good thirty thousand foot view of how we stand expenditures and revenue and.
Yeah, you, you know, with, with budget reports, I mean, there are weeds, but they're in the background, and if you want to get into those, you can.
Absolutely, and we could, yeah, we could spend, make this a sixty-page report and you could, you know, but is it really? Something that you want, you can come in at any time and get that information, which council members have done in the past. And be able to review that and have that. Um but it's not something that's really. Could be helpful to more than what you're seeing here.
Thirty thousand foot view sounds really good.
Yeah. And now you'll get nitty gritty here in about a month. Uh one thing I, I was gonna say is that uh um she did want to start uh scheduling workshops. She wanted to do initially uh. Two workshops, but she wanted to do it out of council on the same day as a council meeting. As a prelude to actually a workshop, so it's not a separate day, just to start getting the process done. Um and getting some of the stuff out there sometime in March.
So is that a, um would it be before the council meeting?
Yeah, so the idea would be started at like six o'clock for the council meeting, so we could start that process. In March and then in April, we probably have just a singular day where we're doing the budget separate from the meetings, but just to get that. Prior stuff just kind of worked out and, and, and the council without. Making you have to come in extra days and just trying to do it. In a way like that. So she wanted to throw that out to talk about and see if that would be something that we could start the process a little early, but it would be. It would be beneficial to limit having to do numerous standalone meetings. Which we're have to do anyway, but reduce some of those hours while keeping everything on the same day.
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, I have that flexibility of one job to be able to do that. I don't know about you two.
Some days I do, but some days I don't.
And just trying to.
Yeah, okay, to work with it if I can.
So, you know, instead of coming at seven, it'd be a six.
Right.
I mean, I would say we could always do it, I guess, not her, but I'm, I'm saying that we could always do it after the meeting.
No.
I just throw it out there. But she wanted to do that just because we have new council members.
Yeah.
And, and just trying to streamline things before we get into the meat potatoes. Oh, yeah. That's all she had.
Believe it or not, I'm actually looking forward to those discussions. You know, I really am.
You're not, right? It's, it's the most important thing we do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's uh, yes. Yes, it is. No.
Speaking of workshops and then things we do, we never finished the ordinance.
Yeah, I was. So we, we did. Um I had to put it together into a draft form. And then you have to go back and look at it and make modifications after that. So I have not done that yet. I need to get on that.
Yeah, it's the, we, what we've sort of went through a rough draft.
Right, and yeah, we did get all the way through it, but it seemed like the whole project wasn't completed at all.
Yeah, so I, I, I need to put everything that we went through, those sixty pages. Have Marsh take a look at it, just to make sure that, you know, that is a draft ordinance. And then we'll have probably a, a meeting to go to draft orders and make any changes last, you know, before we actually present it as a finished project.
Yeah.
That's on me, so I apologize.
No worries, I just.
So. Mark. Do we wanna? We're ready to get down to. Roundtable, do you want to talk a little bit about A two A? He's our, he's our chairman of our group, and I did. Everybody should, should have some A two A information. Then I also put out some, and they should be an A two A. Well. Deal here, this is uh sort of the things that happened to our meeting. I know. Know that one article that Marilyn Midower actually wrote, they have sort of the futuristic. Shoshone, if everything went good, meetings went good and everything. Went, went well, what would Shoshone, what would we be saying in a few years in Shoshone?
This uh. This is a very interesting project. Cause what it's really trying to do, create some sort of framework in order to be applied, not only to the projects that. We want to do now, but any project that we really want to do for the, for the town. In that regard, it's um, it's a good process and it's, it's, but it requires time. I mean, it really does require time. There's a lot of, we spent in the two-day discussion that we had in, you know, at this, on the Wednesday and Thursday. It was, the first day was a lot of just. Kind of brainstorming things, and then we tried to focus that down more on the second day that we had and um. Uh we did pretty good, I think, and we kind of know the general direction we want to go, which is really trying, like you talked about, Danny, really trying to find. The dollars available, whether that be grants or any other sort of funding that we could come up with. Maybe we have a huge benefactor that would like to just. You know, drop a, you know, about one and a half million dollars in their lap to make that happen. I mean, we'd be happy to do that. That'd be pretty cool. If you know anybody, anybody out there, just let us know, you know, have them write you a check. You know, so, but it's, it's just really trying to put those pieces together and. And, and all of us know, a project of this nature, there's a lot of I's to dot and T's to cross. And so with the A two A, it's trying to not get it too far, but. I mean, too broad, because if it's too broad, nothing will ever be accomplished. Frankly, what I expect to be the outcome from this project that we're working on is, is because. It's research and other things to come together to really say, this is what we need to do. And that really is going to become, I think, the outlook or the outcome of our ten-week project. It's really a ten-week project and we're already, you know, three weeks into it. You know, so I mean, it's, frankly, the ten weeks is gonna go by really fast and all of us have other things to do, right? You know, so I just can't be heads down focused, but um. I have, I have a lot of hope that we're gonna be able to get to where we need to go with it. So if, and, but. At, at the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, there was a group that came in and firms that state, what's their name, they're um the grant folks, the federal grant folks.
Oh, you wouldn't ask, I shouldn't tell you.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Anyway, there, there's a.
Haggerty? That group or the other, one of Haggerty?
No, uh Governor Gordon had put together as a commission with it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so what they've done is they've gone through, now looking at federal grants, try to sort them out according to. Um Wyoming, and what works for Wyoming. In that group, uh Joel had asked them to come up with a list of grants, it'd be possibilities for the projects that we're, and these are presents. So that's just one source. There's still could be state and other sorts of things. So it's really trying to do all the background information to say, this is the direction to get the income that we need. The dollars we need in order to complete the project. So. We need, so what we're doing now is we met in February fifth and sixth, I think it was Wednesday and Thursday. And then we started meeting every Friday at noon after that. Uh we have like a um. Uh a Google net, is that what it's called? Anyway, it's like a Zoom meeting. Zoom is the world wide event, so it's, it's like a Zoom meeting. And this is where folks from uh the Wyoming Business Council, we had. Two people really well. We're getting a lot of help. Uh we have, uh I can't tell you Connor's last name, but he's a, he's new to Wyoming Business Council, but he has a background in doing feasibility studies. So that's kind of our first project, is try to put together a feasibility study. And um that was, yeah, you don't know that, but that's what we're kind of looking at. And I need to talk to you and Dave about what. Some of the feasibility things that I need to pick your brain and Dave's brain.
That's really real estate for Dave.
Dave, yeah, yeah, so. And just wanting to make sure that we're headed in the right direction and doing the right thing. So. When it's all said and done, people go, yes, I want to buy that lot. That's really kind of the bottom line.
So how hard is it gonna take to sell a lot?
Yeah. So it's that, and are we putting in the right?
Right.
Right features for development in Shoshone that's going to attract people here. You know, and to want to buy these and with the idea of making that affordable, but.
Attainable.
Attainable, there you go.
And it's uh, you know, there's five of us and everybody's got some expertise.
Yeah.
That can put into, they picked my brain pretty. Quite big, since sometimes I don't share all of the best, I have a lot of the story that I needed to get out to everybody else. We, we worked on that.
Yeah, we did at the conference in particular. And then even afterwards, we have kind of a list of things. You know, any of this information, certainly welcome to share with anybody who would be interested. And matter of fact, it, I, I could do that, so.
Well, I hope to give a report every, every council meeting. You know, and this is just some of the stuff. Like here, this is just sort of what we developed, you know. Sort of, that's about what we're doing. But this could, this, this team, uh like I said, build structure to do. Build the structure for the future to, to help, help the town to prosper, expand, you know, to. Find what we, what we can do. That's. Really what, what we're trying, trying, trying to do here. And I think we gotta have a, you know, I think we have a good, good team that's, we all have. Things that we can add. And a lot of good questions, let me tell you that. And identifying roadblocks.
And the focus is really doing right by Shoshone.
Right.
You know, giving Shoshone what Shoshone needs. And that's where everybody's input into what that is would be really helpful. We have some ideas. I mean, there was a master plan for the, uh for the town that was put together. You know, there's just discussions that people have had, but it all kind of works together since this is what we need. You have any questions?
Just like you to keep us informed on it.
I hear I'm going to be talking about it every council meeting. So I will, I will come better prepared with a more succinct sort of, this is what we're doing. And I will make that happen.
But yeah, we're, like I said, this is part of the, the state's program to help us and uh. The, the A two A and then, then the others, uh. The Wild Gov. To help us distribute our grants to, and we're, you know, we're. Trying to touch bases to get all the guidance we can to help us.
Cause. You need, I mean, you have people who are specialists in writing grants for this type of grant with the federal government. I mean, it's that sort of expertise and. Uh the college we use, folks like that, consultants like that all the time. And frankly, some of them are really good and some of them probably aren't, you know, we won't go back to them, you know, but. It, so, but you don't know.
Yes.
You don't know, but anyway, so.
Yes, C W C leads the state when they're, they're uh. Working on grants and stuff, your economic, I've got a committee that, they, they lead the state to get more grants than we, many other committees come to the state.
Yeah.
And they're a heckman asset for us here in Fremont County to use. They want to help us.
And I'm hoping to uh. Or I sell that information for us. Which is very legitimate because it was, it's all paid for public dollars and. You know, it's frankly for Fremont County, most of it.
His presence in econ, economists.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, what an, what an asset to have here. I know he spoke down at the governor's business council meeting and learned about that. So anyway, any, any other questions for Mark? The chairman? So, anyway, any, any other questions for Mark, the chairman? Well, appreciate that, that report. Uh, credit union bill, okay, Jake, would you like to add anything?
No, nothing to add.
Tammy, would you like to add anything? You like the weather though, don't you? You wanna add anything, Chief?
I guess, our, uh. Officer, uh, talked to her before, that, uh, is left able today, so he is, uh. Going back with Highway Patrol.
Okay.
And we did, uh, have applicants, uh, only one was qualified as a, a. By officer, um, and so we, uh, uh, made an offer to her and her starting will be March tenth. To fill that position.
Okay.
Uh, are there applicants that was, uh. Not, uh, had, had never been a police officer before, and, uh. What we're looking for in the, in this, that was a certified police officer. Hard to train an officer.
Right, you, you heard a, a good experienced officer.
Yeah.
Which, yeah. Can be cheaper in the long run, even though we gotta pay a little more to start off.
Form, I'll formally explain that at the next meeting, but.
You bet.
They're, they're not currently starting yet, so I don't wanna.
Right, correct, very good, thank you.
But just to keep you apprised of.
Any guidance from us, to us, counselor?
I don't know, not tonight.
Okay. I'll touch base with the, the credit union, uh. Bill, uh, passed, AKA the malt shop bill. They, but it got, it got through the House, got through the Senate, right, the governor's, the governor's signature. So that'll enable us starting July first, if, if we so desire to deposit money, money in the credit union. When we have here in town, would, would not have to take that money to Riverton anymore.
What bill number is that?
House Bill one forty-three. And I spoke in favor of it, to Senate and the House, and the House, they, they, three of the. The committee man asked when we're gonna start having malts again. And so the chair of the committee, when he said voted to, to vote on it, uh, he, uh. Said the credit union bill, AKA the malt shop bill. It's on record. But, but, but anyway, so we finally. I've been actively involved with that for six years, uh, they, but they started that ten years ago when they first started trying to get that. Been a long process, uh. Well, I mean, cardio pulmonary services, uh. Everybody got a copy of, you know, where their vision, that what, what they're planning to do, I believe it's up to about a seventy-seven hundred square foot. Building with a fifteen hundred square foot basement, that's the, the last, they're using Plan One architect. Uh. But it's, uh. It's moving along, they gotta secure all the money they need to do it, but they're spending some money on, on what they're doing, so. You know, their, their intention is to move forward. We did present it to the county commissioner to let him know that we may seek some of their. Half cent funding, uh, economic development funding, because this, this project would be a big. You know, uplift the, the whole Fremont County would open four days a week, have cardio pulmonary. Cardiologists open four days a week in Fremont, right now it's only two days a week. And Lander, Semoplis, Worland, only a day every other week, so it's open for Semoplis also and Worland. Four days a week, be much easier for them to schedule, uh, cardio pulmonary visit, and. They'll be able to do everything here but cath lab and surgery, I think, pretty much, so. It'd be, it would be good, uh, but that's moving along just, just fine. I included whenever visitors council. Quarterly report, it's, whenever this council seems to be doing well, moving, moving forward, uh. Uh, have any questions about that? Get them to, get them to me and I'll bring it up to our, our next, uh, next meeting. If, uh. I think that covers everything I need to cover, seem like I'm forgetting, so.
See the signage, signage you do.
Oh, about our signs here?
Well, it's on your list.
Yeah, Plan One, uh, so they were supposed to.
Well, signage.
Yeah, they were supposed to have our stuff done and designed, and they sent it to a company that decided to hose up shop essentially. And they are resubmitting it to numerous shops and they expect to have. A file report for that process here in the next, I think, two to three weeks.
Right.
That right?
Yep, that's correct.
I don't know if you got that email or not.
Yeah, I did, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, I did.
All right, take your thunder.
Yeah, no, I forgot about that signage, but yeah, no, that's exactly what's happened.
We should have that, we better have that here the next couple of months, uh, at least before summer gets here, so around the spring, as well as. The, uh, yard having grass and, and saw laid, as well as a flagpole.
Our cute little yard right out there.
It's the yard.
I do have a question about this sign, so it's just gonna say Shoshone Town Hall, is that what it's gonna say, or?
Uh, we'll have a, I'll have the design of what it's gonna look like, the, the, uh, our. Architectural schematic, whatever drawing or whatever, I can get that email to you, we do have that, so.
I'm just curious what it says.
I think it's gonna have crossroads of Wyoming or.
It'll have the logo and then they'll have like police, you know, the departments that are in here. On both sides of the building, so people don't just drive by a brick building with, you know, no signage, so.
So, I think signs are a great idea, I like the idea. You know, as a military guy at the flagpole, you know, I might have to stop and salute every once in a while, we need to do maybe a. Anyway, flag ceremony, but we could forget that, but, um.
I'll leak you in with Freddie Ellis.
No, that's okay, um, but, um, Freddie would be happy to do it.
Yes, he would.
Uh, and, and rightfully so, um. But I was thinking that, you know, this, I just, this is spitballing, and it's not meant to change any direction, it's not meant to do any of that, it's just. If we had a sign that was like a, um, a sign that had a changing message on it.
Oh, we have one of those outside of town.
Outside of town?
Yeah, it blinds you.
Go on, ease.
Go to Casper.
Go to Casper?
Yeah.
For the medical clinic, does it talk about events that are here and?
Yeah, and we can, well, we gotta, we have it as, but, um, we program it to say whatever we want.
If it's real dark at night, it really blinds you when you go by.
We, yeah, it's, it's hard to work on those lights, we're setting up, we need to try to.
Yeah, we, we gotta figure out a color schematic that, um, is a little bit more, uh.
Less intrusive.
Yes. I'm, I'm pretty sure the space station can read our sign, as it goes over it.
They do have some pretty cool optic tech.
Yeah.
Okay. Shouldn't it be by the town hall?
Oh, well, we got it done as a grant from, uh, Economic, uh. And so it had to be on, either through town, so it was on that side of town.
You don't wanna end town, nobody will build a sleep.
But that's something that we could probably look at separately to, uh, like a marquee or something that's a digital.
We, 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 there's a possibility we could put a sign, the school used to have a sign out in this corner. That did just that.
Well, you know, where we live down here, I mean, we, we get a full view of the, the, the school, and, uh. That sign is almost blinding in the middle of the night, you know, so it's pretty phenomenal. It's like, where did that come from, you know, in the middle of nowhere. Thank you, I just, to bring that up, not that anything should change, but.
Oh, it ain't a bad idea.
I think something close to here would make a lot of sense, maybe one that wouldn't kill you, because we do want people to sleep at town.
Yeah.
I'm sure we could probably do some, get some, uh, votes on some. More simple signs than the one we had out there, which is quite large and more probably specific than what we need here.
You know, but, you know, over the summer, we've got some really good events that happen here, you know, the tractor thing, you know, and what Jordan does with the basketball. Competitions and, I mean, those things are, we're getting out most views, you know, to be able to see and. You can't communicate, you can't over communicate, you know, you just can't do that, you know, and so all the information that gets out is all good and fine. And it needs to continue, this is just one more avenue, making people know.
No.
I think it would be a. A good idea if we can get the right price point and, and something that we could use and. Do the message that we're wanting to get across.
Marquee.
Digital marketing.
Digital. Hopefully digital, I mean, the one at the college, you could be in our, uh. Public affairs, um, marketing person is able to change the sign from her laptop and do voice where she.
That's what we can do with that one.
Yeah, and it's just, I mean, that's the digital part, it's really cool.
Change it with your smartphone.
Probably ever, anymore.
You get it, it's only a fat bones.
Yeah, yeah.
Look like an idiot if this fellow were here or something.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, kind of a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Move by Council Harkey, send by Council, settle, we adjourn, any further discussion, none being all papers say aye. Aye, pulls the same motion passed, all in the affirmative.
Boy, damn, they were kinda slow on that to me.
Fired you guys, it's been a long week with my daughter.
Eight oh six.